Testing, one, two, three.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello, it is, uh, it is about that time, I believe. Let me check and make sure. It is seven on the dot. So, thank you all for being here. And Madam Clerk, when you, uh, I called a meeting to order. I'm calling roll, yeah.
Other woman, West. Other woman, Tattman.
Yeah.
Other woman, Reed. Alderman, Carol.
Here.
Alderman, Thomas.
Present.
Other woman, Dills.
Present.
Other woman, Avant Elliott.
Present.
You have, uh, Mr. Mayor, you have six present, one absent.
Alrighty. Quorum has been established, so we will move to approve the agenda.
May I move to approve the agenda as it is written and presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in proper second. Are there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, as may. As have it, we'll move on to new business. Emergency approval of CNC group proposal for HVAC upgrade. Is, uh, is that, is there anyone to put that motion on the floor?
Mayor, this Alderman Thomas, I move that we accept the, uh, emergency approval of CNC's proposal for HVAC upgrade for the rec center, based off the information provided by the Director of, uh, Parks and Rec. And I'll type it in the chat.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Um, Alderman, Alderman, uh, wait, okay, I see the hands up. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Now, are there any discussion? Now, Alderman Carol.
Um, in, in the email from the, uh, rec center director, he, he said that he was waiting on another, not bid, but another, um, I don't know what I'm trying to say. And that was on contract. He was waiting on another, um, from M&amp;J or something like that to me. But he never, he was supposed to get it later that evening, but we never heard anything more about it. Could he speak to that, please?
Uh, alrighty, just, oh yeah, Jimmy's on. Jimmy, would you address that, please?
Yeah, so, um, ACs pulled out of their, their bid. That was the one that we were waiting on. I did reach out to MDC. Yeah, I think it's MDC. They gave me a quote. It came back at sixty thousand. I can forward you guys that. Um, but it's not as, it's more than what CNC is.
And then, Mayor, I have another question, may I?
Okay.
Um, why not replace the whole system as opposed to just doing these updates? If you could speak to that, Mayor.
Uh, Jimmy, would you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the, the upgrade is, kind of break this down. We replaced the boiler in 2019. That was a big one that was approved through Ameren previously. Um, and the boiler for that, the new one that is approved, that is running fine. What's going on, though, is that it has to receive a signal from the software in order for it to run smoothly. So, the brand-new boiler is fine. What it's not doing is the software that runs City Hall and the Recreation Center. That's the part that it's losing signal to. Same thing would happen to the pump down in the pool area. That lost signal as well. So, it's just not receiving a signal. This software is probably fifteen, twenty years old, I'm estimating. It should have been updated many years ago, along with just software upgrades, just like you had to upgrade your phone every now and then. Um, it's the same system as that. So, what they're proposing to do is upgrade us to their current version, which, um, will allow us to have more access to all the things. Um, we'll be able to put it on my computer and any of those computer that's in the city right now currently. Mark's old computer, the previous director, sits in my office on a, um, a bookshelf, and that's the only one that has access to our current software, because it's so old. If we were to upgrade that computer, we'd lose access to everything.
Yes. One final question, Mayor, may I?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Um, so, what I'm asking, though, is like, why not, you were talking about the wiring and the controllers that were hooked up to each one of these units, and you said, I, I believe there were two controllers that were, were broken and that needed to be replaced in the, um, in your email as well. I'm asking, why not replace that whole system, then? As opposed to just upgrading the software and repairing those two controllers? Because it sounds like it's already kind of old, anyway.
I mean, that's going to be something, um, I guess you guys can determine if you want to approve more. Um, this was a proposal we got from CNC when they came out and went through our system that would get us up to date and everything. And now, if we wanted to go through and replace all the wiring, um, and controllers and all, I think there's like seventeen different units between the rec center and them. We could do that, too, and just do a full replacement. It's going to obviously going to cost more. But it's kind of, I guess, the board's decision on how far they want, and how much money you guys are willing to invest in the HVAC system.
Right. So, but, but all of that equipment is over a decade old, at least, right? To your knowledge?
To my knowledge, I believe most of the units are. Um, I know the ones at the Recreation Center, um, like the ones that were in the locker room, that one's twenty-one years old. Uh, but that's the unit itself. So, the controllers, the software that runs it, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I know some of the older actual AC units on top of the roof are older. But that's a kind of a whole different proposal, I guess you can say, because it's going to really run the price up.
Alright. Old woman Elliot.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just wondering what, um, budget line item will, will the expense come from?
Well, Howard's not on. He would have to tell you that. Uh, Patrick, yeah, he's there. No, that's Pat back. No, Howard's not on.
Has Jimmy spoken with the, um, with the treasurer to find out where line item, if you come from?
Um, I propose to use ARPA funds. Um, I've been on two of them meetings that, for the webinars, and this is an approved expense through that, since it is improving the ventilation throughout the system. And so, um, I, I would advise to use the ARPA funds, since we have close to a million dollars of that funds that we just got received. Um, so thirty thousand dollars out of that would be a drop in the bucket to improve our HVAC between the City Hall and Recreation Center, in my opinion.
Okay.
Any other discussions? Send none. Uh, uh, with, all in.
Can we do a roll call?
Yeah, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Other woman, West.
Yes.
Other woman, Tattman.
Yes.
Alderman, Carol.
Yes.
Alderman, Thomas.
Yes.
Other woman, Dills.
Yes.
Other woman, Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Mr., um, Mr. Mayor, you have, uh, six yeses.
Alright, thank you, the motion carries. Uh, planning and zoning, uh, commission.
I had, man, I had a question. It's seven of us here. Someone didn't vote.
What was the vote? Uh, we got one person.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My mistake. It's only six of us.
Only six of us, yeah?
Yeah.
Alright, Pat back, uh, planning is on.
Good evening, everybody. Um, Planning and Zoning held their regular October meeting on Monday, October eleventh. Subject that evening was concern the subdividing of the property at eight oh five Chambers Road. North County Fire and Rescue is in the process of buying a portion of that property from Riverview Gardens School District for the location of a new firehouse. Eight oh five Chambers was the fire district's first choice of locations last year, but it seemed unavailable at the time due to the asking price by the school district. After our April meeting, Mayor Pearson was able to persuade the school district to reconsider sale of the property. Uh, they got together with the fire district afterwards, and they were able, able to come to terms on a sale. Board members were forwarded the subdivision preliminary plat for the property at eight oh five Chambers. The property is proposed to be divided into lot A at the west end and lot B at the east end. Lot A would continue to operate as the school district's bus facility. Lot B would be the proposed site for a new firehouse. After reviewing the preliminary subdivision plat and talking with the fire district's representatives, members of planning and zoning are satisfied this subdivision would allow for sale and development of the land in ways beneficial to the city. Planning and zoning found the subdivision preliminary plat satisfies the requirements of section twenty-four dash twenty-five, which is action of the Planning and Zoning Commission and is acceptable in relation to good planning. Members voted to recommend approval of the subdivision pre- preliminary plat to the board. And we are, again, recommending approval of this preliminary subdivision plat. Believe everybody's been forward to that.
Is there a second?
Mayor.
I made the motion.
Okay, go ahead and make the motion.
Make a motion that we accept the, uh, subdivision preliminary plat, uh, proposed subdivision of property at eight oh five Chambers Road.
Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Who was that said second person?
I'm sorry. Other woman, Dills.
Okay, then. It's been moved in proper second. Are there any further discussion? Uh, Alderman Carol.
Um, I got a question about the fees and, um, that the fire district has to pay for these. Um, is there any way that that can be waived? I mean, that's just kind of, I, I think we need to be more cooperative with, with the fire district or school district. I don't know if cooperative is the right word, but, you know, I mean, they're coming in, they do things for us. It just seems kind of a, I don't know, a burden that they have to pay fees or we have to pay fees. If we could just work together and, and like, maybe come up with an ordinance to actually waive those types of fees for anything from the school district or the fire district, and maybe they could do the same for us. And that, that's all I have to say.
Uh, old woman Elliot.
Yes, I wanted to ask Attorney White Coman whether or not I had to recuse myself since I'm on the school board.
I don't believe you have to leave the meeting, but, uh, you cannot vote on that issue.
Now, I didn't say excuse. I was saying, I was, I was using a term to recuse myself. I, I was, I was not trying to excuse myself. Yeah, yeah.
I, I agree with you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Alright, uh, old woman Dills.
Mayor, um, and this is to the board. We, I spoke with, um, our attorney, and it's the board decision for us to decide if we want to waive the fees, and she will create the ordinance, so it should be done by ordinance. So, and I am in agreement with the fees being waived as well.
Okay, so I just, if we go ahead on and pass the, uh, the, uh, the bill before us, and then, uh, get the ordinance and pass it and to waive the fees. Alright, so, any, any further discussion? All in, uh, call a roll. Uh, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Other woman, West.
Yes.
Other woman, Tattman.
Yes.
Alderman, Carol.
Yes.
Alderman, Thomas.
Yes.
Other woman, Dills.
Yes.
Other woman, Avant Elliott.
I'm being refused, uh, for a potential conflict of interest being a school board member.
Mr. Mayor, you have five, uh, five yeses.
Alright, motion carries. Uh, bill number twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-one. Alderman, Thomas. Yeah, Alderman, Thomas.
Yes, uh, excuse me. I move for a first and second reading of bill number twenty-six, twenty-one. An ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a contract with the Davy Tree Expert Company for the removal of certain trees.
Is there a second?
I second.
Alright, been moved in proper second. Are there any further discussion? Send none, call a roll.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, old woman Elliot.
Oh, I was trying to see if that was the, um, the seal bid from some months ago. Is that the same one that hadn't been addressed? Or is this something new?
Uh, Jeff Ross, would you, uh, explain that?
I think that's Jimmy.
Yeah, that's true. Um, the trim grant that I received from the Missouri Department of Conservation. Um, that was, um, was sent out for bid in August. Um, Davies Tree Service and Gamma came back with sealed bids. Uh, Davies Tree Service, I think, was roughly around fifteen hundred to two thousand hours cheaper. I sent the bid tabulation form to you guys back in August, September timeframe, and on, we selected to go with Davies based on price, and they were doing the same scope of work in both bids. So, um, that's what that is for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank, any further discussion? Uh, brother clerk, call a roll, please.
Other woman, West.
Yes.
Other woman, Tattman.
Yes.
Alderman, Carol.
Yes.
Alderman, Thomas.
Yes.
Other woman, Dills.
Yes.
Other woman, Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there were six yeses.
Alright, thank you, the motion carries. Uh, bill number.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's right. Second reading. Thank you.
Alright. Bill number twenty-six, twenty-one, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a contract with the Davy Tree Expert Company for the removal of certain tree.
Is there a second?
Second. Avant Elliott.
Alright, and any further discussion? Uh, brother clerk, call a roll again, please.
Other woman, West.
Yes.
Other woman, Tattman.
Yes.
Alderman, Carol.
Yes.
Alderman, Thomas.
Yes.
Other, other woman, Dills.
Yes.
Other woman, Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, is six, uh, six yeses.
Alright, thank you. Uh, bill number twenty-six, eighteen.
Bill number twenty-six, eighteen. I move for a, and for a first and second reading of bill number twenty-six, eighteen. An ordinance updating the pay plan and compensation for certain employees in the classified services of the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors, Missouri, and repealing other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
I second.
Been moved in proper the second. Uh, the, any discussion? Old woman, Elliot.
Yes, um, there was not like any, um, board discussion around this. What is the rationale for the increases? Um, when the staff gets salary steps? Um, could you please explain, um, who, who, um, proposed this ordinance?
But Thomas, are you going to address that? Do we need the chief to address?
I can, I mean, I can address what I read. And basically.
Chief, would you address that, please?
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, this is kind of a multi-tiered process. Um, the amendment to the pay scale was Was uh due to certain employees who needed to be uh their pay schedule had to be. Uh, moved up the um and these people had received raises in years. Um, one of them uh was my assistant. Uh, the one was the finance clerk. Um, I believe uh you have to ask Jimmy and Jeff. I believe they had something in there as well. That uh modified the pay pan, pay pay plan under uh in their departments.
So you, are you speaking to the the staff that have reached the the top of their um their scale?
Well, it's it's not just reaching the top of the scale. It's recognizing also that they're way underpaid. Um, but for example, um, my administrative assistant hasn't had a raise in many years and neither has the finance clerk.
But I I'm not sure if you answering what I'm asking. They haven't got a raise because of what?
Because they're topped out on their pay scale.
Okay, that's what I asked the first time.
Yeah, so here.
Okay.
Here's some, can I get, just give some background. Uh, historically, um. Historically, clerks in general were all paid on the same pay scale. Uh, if you, if you look back, you'll see or actually on there, you'll still see administrative clerk. Um, but administrative clerks like the finance clerk, um, my adminis- my assistant. Um, they do two different jobs. Uh, the skills required to do those jobs are different. So the pay is also different as well. Um, there was some um disparity. And how people were being paid and what they're being paid to do. Um, lower skilled jobs were being paid the same rate. As jobs that had the higher, that had the higher skills needed to do their job.
All right, all the woman Wes.
Thank you. So for me, this ordinance is very vague. Uh, in its language, uh, based on what she said. What I would prefer to see is every department have its own ordinance. Uh, because uh like he said. Do require uh, jobs do require various skills, education, et cetera. So I don't, I would not like to see a blanket ordinance address every employee in the city. So that's just my statement.
Uh, all woman deals.
Okay. Okay, my question is, this is basically. The increase for certain employees is also to retain the employees because the wages have been. Increased across the state and the nation with fifteen dollars. A hour going up. Um, I apologize like that on my phone and on my computer. I'm having computer issues. So this question is to you, chief, up to to the chief, that the increase is to bring everyone up to standard. Um, because our wages are so low and we we're trying to maintain and retain our staff. And that's across the board. And we're talking about administrative uh um staff. Those over at the rec center, seven dollars an hour, eight dollar a hour is no longer relevant. In the atmosphere that we have. A lot of employers are offering fifteen dollars an hour. With sign on bonuses and we're trying to retain the staff that knows the job, knows the city. And that's basically what that's for. Is that correct, chief?
Uh, you're absolutely on target. Uh, I couldn't say it better myself. And the other issue we're facing is is as the long-term employees leave, they're taking a lot of tacit knowledge with them, like you said. Um, we've already experienced that over the last couple of years and we're trying to retain the people that have been there for many years. So we still have people that have long-term knowledge of the city and it's very, very beneficial.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, I'll, I'm in uh Carol.
Um, yep, two things. I requested something um from the city clerk about a month ago regarding this ordinance. And I never received that information, so I don't really feel comfortable. Voting for this until I get that information. And then secondly, I contacted the Missouri Municipal League and they um. Do a salary survey and I got a copy of that salary survey. And um according to that, and I didn't go through every position and everything like that, but we're paying. Our employees or certain employees that I looked at above average of other municipalities. That's all I have to say.
All right, uh, any further discussion?
Yes, mayor, um, I did also request um the salary steps and the salary increases that staff would. Get and that was when Fran was here and Lori never provided that, so. There's things that we're not getting in order to make effective decisions around um. Uh, ordinance like this in addition to the fact that um the rec center uh position specifically. Has steps in there and it was evaluated to uh be competitive and it's almost all the positions in there except for some of the um. The officer positions like the city clerk and um. The uh treasurer and things like that, so um. I think there needs to be a better job in providing us the information that we request around salary increases for this year. So that when something like this comes up, we have enough information.
All woman Tannen.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, first of all, would like for to add uh. Ottoman Carol, if he would share the information he got from the municipal league, because according to the state statute, the um. Minimum wage has been raised to fifteen dollars an hour for state and federal employees, so. I looking at the pay scales, I don't know any of our employees that are making fifteen dollars an hour or more. Um, they're still making minimum wage. So that's my concern that if we wanted to follow the precedence that's been set by the state of Missouri. And uh federal, that we consider using that information following the state statutes and the federal statutes. That the minimum wage be raised for our employees in order to retain them of fifteen dollars an hour.
All right, anyone else? All woman Wes.
So, um, I don't think the debate here is whether or not uh employees deserve a pay raise. Um, I think part of the problem is that in order for us to make an informed decision. And inform folk that we need the information that we requested months ago. Additionally, I would like again to see all the departments separated. So that I can make an informed decision on how to vote. I do believe they deserve that fifteen dollars an hour. That's not the question. So the question is what I previously stated. I don't like to be redundant.
All right, thank you.
Mayor make, may I make a comment? Um, all the women West, I just, I just want to make sure that you have the information in your packet. They, the um. The pay schedule is broken down by departments. It's broken down by uh city hall. It's broken down by the street department. It's broken down by police department. It's broken down by uh park and rec. So you can see each page has its own department in grouping and the. Um, the, you know, the type of job and the range uh that goes in. And going back to the administrative clerk's salary, over ten years. You move from twenty seven thousand a year to thirty three thousand a year. So, and that's a problem too. And that's, that's something that um I'm trying to correct uh with my own system. And her was actually one more thing and hers was based on a police survey. That we do with the chiefs regionally here in St. Louis every year.
Uh, any, any further discussion?
Now, floor, um, I want to make one comment. Um, the positions within those. Within this current ordinance has been separate ordinances so that we would not be amending. One ordinance to address a specific person's um salary that may be in the leadership role or so forth. But I would like to make a mo- motion to table um this ordinance to the um. To the next meeting or un- until the uh information is provided.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Send um, send that does make fun. Who's that speak? Okay then. It's been moved and proper the second that we would table this motion um uh all and uh. Uh, brother, call the role.
I'll put it in the chat.
And while that's being typed out the chat, uh, the city does not have an identified city clerk at this point. Um, I will take the responsibility. If you need any information regarding uh salaries, salary surveys. Please send me an email and I will get you the information uh uh that you need.
I'm doing this from my phone, so I apologize. Um, basically, mayor, just to restate that, I moved at the ordinance's table until proper documentation received as requested.
All right, all the woman uh Wes second it. So uh color uh.
Other woman West.
Yes.
Other woman Tannen.
No.
Ottoman Carol.
Yes.
Ottoman Thomas.
Uh, no.
Other woman deals.
No.
Other woman of my Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you have three no's and and three yes.
Okay, then uh. Uh, I will go ahead and vote uh no as well. And so we, we will now vote on the original motion. Uh, would you call the role for that?
Yes, sir. Other woman West. Other woman Tannen.
Yes.
Ottoman Carol.
No.
Ottoman Thomas.
Yes.
Other woman deals.
Yes.
Other woman of my Elliot.
No.
Mister, Mister Mayor is gonna, I have three no and three yes.
Okay, so uh I will vote yes. So the motion uh motion carries.
On the second reading.
A second reading.
Reading, yeah, go ahead with the second reading. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Second reading of bill number twenty six eighteen. An ordinance updating the pay plan and compensation for certain employees in the class. In the classified service of the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors, Missouri. And repealing other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
Now, second.
I second.
It's been moved and proper the second uh are there any further discussion?
Uh, ma. Uh, do I need, can I need to raise my hand? I don't think that we can. I'm sorry, but I I do have a question.
All right, go ahead.
For the attorney, um, attorney Dorothy White Coleman. Were we properly moving it to second with it being only four for the ordinance? Don't we need five? I don't know if she's available.
Um. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Chair, what what is, the the question is about the passage of the ordinance?
The, the, the question is, and I'm asking the attorney, we have three, four and three yes. I mean, three no and three yes. The mayor broke the tie for four. However, for the ordinance, we would have to have five. Is that correct, Attorney White Coleman?
Uh, that is correct. It cannot pass without it.
All right, so the motion fails.
A mayor.
Yes.
Um, clarification, the first reading was not for that determination. The second reading would have, is for the um. The vote, the final vote. So you breaking the tie was sufficient for that. He's on the second reading now and we have to go through that process.
Um, it was my understanding that that was the question that all the woman deals was asking.
Yes, and the mayor was about to end the process based on your answer, thinking that we were finished.
Uh, well, that wasn't the intent of my response. I I was answering all the woman deals' question.
I'm saying that I, I'm aware of that. I'm saying that he did not understand that he was about to end the process. Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Uh, the motion fails.
We haven't done the second um vote. That's why I was saying, mayor.
Have to go to the second reading, mayor.
All right, well, let's move to the second reading. What if the, if it fails on the first one, do you need a second one? Uh, uh.
It didn't, it didn't fail because you broke the tie. Five was not required for the first one.
All right, go, go right here.
Vote on the first in a um five, uh two third on the second.
Okay then, go, go right ahead. Put a motion out then, let's uh.
It's been um, it's been um, it was moved and seconded, right? Um, other woman deals interjected and asked the question, so we're on the vote there.
All right, well, go ahead and vote.
Other woman West.
No.
Other woman Tannen.
Yes.
Ottoman Carol. Ottoman Thomas.
Yes.
Other woman deals.
Yes.
Ottoman of my Elliot.
No.
There are three no's and three yes, uh, Mr. Mayor.
All right then, so, so the motion fails. Uh, you need five to pass an ordinance. All righty, so that ends that. Don't then end that uh turn of coma.
Yes, it does, mayor.
All right, thank you. So I'm gonna move on to the next. Bill number twenty six twenty.
I would like to make a motion for the first and second reading of bill twenty six twenty. I would ask either of my colleagues, James or Dinah, if they could tap it in the chat for me. I, I'm not familiar how to ta- type it in on my phone and I'm having problems with my computer. And I'll begin with the first reading, if that's okay, uh, chair. And ordinance of the city. I'm sorry.
Uh, did you get those seconds? Let's go.
Yes, it was second by Ottoman Thomas.
Okay, I guess, I don't know who's second. So it's been moved and proper the second, uh, are there any further discussion? Then uh color roll uh.
I have to read the ordinance first. I have to read the ordinance fir- first, mayor.
Go ahead and read it then, please.
An ordinance of the city of Belle Fountain, Missouri imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate equal to the total local sales tax in effect for the privilege of storing, using, or consuming within the city in any article of tangible personal property pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of sections one four four dot six zero zero through one four four dot seven six one R S O M O providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as the city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised and providing for sub, I'm sorry, submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general municipal election called and to be held in the city on Tuesday, the fifth day of April of two thousand twenty-two.
All right, is, well, we already got a, uh, motion in the second, so are there any further discussion? All woman Elliott?
Yes, so, um, are we aware, um, whether or not that can still be a ballot measure at this point?
Uh, I, I'm not sure. We, we'd have to call the, uh, election board and see if they can get on the ballot.
Is there something that the attorney already is well?
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, all the woman Tatman, what was your question? You faded out.
It's Avant Elliott, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that the ordinance is proposing something to be on the ballot and the election process is started is, do we know whether or not it can go on the ballot?
Yes, it is my, it is, it is my understanding that we have until the end of the month, I think the twenty-eighth, I can verify that date, but I believe it's the twenty-eighth to get it to the election board.
Oh, okay. I believe it's the same one that failed before. Are you aware of that, um, attorney White Coleman?
Well, this is different because this is based on the Wayfair legislation that was passed recently. I do know that there was a proposition that failed previously.
This, this is different. This is to collect that use, uh, internet sales tax that the House passed, uh, several months ago, whenever it was.
Okay.
All, um, Alderman Thomas, I'm sorry, uh, Carol?
Yeah, I, um, from my understanding, um, the, the filing for candidacy closes at the end of this month. But the ballot measures don't have to be into the Board of Elections to the middle of, of January. Um, or the end of January, the twenty-third or something like that. That's my one point. And then my other point is, I, um, I, I think people need to understand, I'm, I'm voting yes to put this on the ballot, but personally I oppose it. So, um, I think people need to be able to vote whether they decide they want, want this tax or not. But just because I'm voting yes, I personally oppose it.
Uh, any other discussion?
In the, uh, ordinance itself, mayor, it says, uh, section four, city clerk is hereby directed to submit a certified copy of the ordinance to the Board of Elections Commission, St. Louis County, Missouri, on or before January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. So I, I think.
Yeah, that's good. Uh, any further discussion? So we have time to get it on there. Um, uh, brother clerk, call the roll.
All the woman west?
Yes.
All the woman Tatman?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
All the woman, uh, deals?
Yes.
Alderman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, you have six yes.
All right, thank you. The motion, uh, passes. Resolution. Second reading, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Uh, whoever read that, uh.
An ordinance of the city of Belle Fountain, Missouri imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate equal to the total local sales tax in effect for the privilege of storing, using, or consuming within the city any article of tangible personal property pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of section one four four dash six zero zero through one four four seven six one R S M O providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced
Stop running, leave now before you fall.
In the same amount as the city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general municipal election called to be held in the city on Tuesday, the fifth day of April of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, on the roll, uh, brother clerk.
All the woman west?
Yes.
All the woman Tatman?
Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
All the woman deals?
Yes.
Alderman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, a six, a yes?
All right, thank you. Uh, measure passes. Uh, can, uh,
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, reference to bill number twenty-six eighteen, I'd like to re-send my vote. I voted yes, I'd like to vote no.
On twenty-six eighteen, um, okay. You can, you can do that.
Okay.
All righty, uh, resolution for, uh, condolences. Who, who has that?
Mayor?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash oh six. A resolution of the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors, Missouri, offering, offering condolences to the family of Detective Antonio Valentine and the St. Louis County Police Department. Whereas the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors has learned with profound sorrow of the death of Detective Antonio Valentine with the St. Louis County Police Department who died in the line of duty. Whereas Detective Valentine worked with the St. Louis County Police Department since two thousand and seven was, and was recently assigned to the Bureau of Drug Enforcement. Whereas Detective Valentine served in the U.S. Army, the National Guard, and recently retired from the Air Force Reserves and saw active combat in Iraq and T- Tigrisstan. Um, whereas Detective Valentine leaves behind four children between the ages of ten and twenty-two. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors, Missouri as follows. The mayor, the Board of Alderpersons, and the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors expresses its deepest sympathy and condolences to the family and friends of Detective Antonio Valentine and honor the contributions and sacrifice made by Detective Antonio Valentine to this community, St. Louis County, and this nation.
Is there a second?
I second.
Are there any discussion? One in favor, say aye. Opposers, no. As have it and the resolution passes. Uh, thank you all for your contributions tonight and for the good work that you've done uh, this night and, uh, I bid everybody a good night. And is the, the motion to dismiss?
I make a motion that we adjourn to me.
I second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposers, no. As have it and so audit. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.